Hi Jim.
Peter.
How we doing?
All right, I'm waiting for Amy.
Yeah. Rick. Rick's muted.
How are you?
Good.
Jim, how do we make out the host this time? I don't see anyone listed as the host.
I think Jim is. Not sure.
It says host in parentheses.
Yeah, and I haven't.
Oh, that's right, last time Amy did do something.
So Jim, if you click on participants, there's those three dots in the lower right hand corner. If you click on that, you can hit claim host and put in the password.
It says it says host disabled. There's no three dots either.
No, do you see the list of participants on the right hand side? Click on click on the thing that says participants and it pulls up a window on the right hand side. And then down the bottom, it says invite mute me and then there's three dots. Click on the three dots. That's when you hit, you can hit claim host.
Yeah, I got it. Amy's having difficulty getting in, I guess. She just sent me a text message.
I'm muted now.
What? Hello, can you guys hear me?
Yep.
Oh, good, can't see my face though, okay.
It's probably a good thing, right?
Gentlemen, Brian's not going to be with us yet?
Brian's Brian's there.
Oh, he is?
Yeah.
Okay, here's that, alright.
It's in the bottom right, well, in my screen. You just unmuted, hi Brian.
Hi guys, I finished early in Salem.
Oh, good.
Alright, so you're. They start their meetings early.
They'll probably finish them early too. So Amy is still on her way in. So like the last time, any public members that are attending this will not have any say, they just have the view to this particularly, basically. And as soon as Amy joins us, I'll have a read the notice, public notice.
I'm good.
Someone put that log on the screen.
Sorry.
Amy says her laptop's giving her trouble. Here I was depending on her to be the technical expert.
Can she join by phone?
Yeah, but that doesn't give her view. You know, really.
It might, but it might be difficult, yeah.
I had a problem with that the other day and I used my iPhone and it worked out pretty good, you could see. And a pinch.
I'll start reading it if she can.
Yeah.
Well, I would like her a part of this discussion, so I would like to wait.
Understand.
Seems like I'm getting more practice with this now. They had sign review, two today and one on Monday. One the week before that, I got one coming Tuesday next week. It's just crazy.
Those are all done on Zoom as well?
They're all Zoom, yeah. I think people are feeling a little more comfortable and, you know, either refreshing their business or doing something else to bring attention to their business.
Yeah.
There are a bunch of them out there that don't have permits for some of their signs, but these are reconditioning, they are new signs, basically. Amy's here.
See.
Alright, Amy. We might just see a black screen. You got to turn your video on, your voice on there, Amy. Two Amy walls. And she's gone. And she's back. Turn on your.
You can see her.
Audio, Amy.
I apologize, this computer is older than dirt and I can't, it takes 15 minutes to turn on.
No, it's it's the internet, the internet's so damn busy these days, you know?
I know.
So can you read the notice so we can get rolling here?
Yes. Alright, just pulling it up now. Consistent with the governor's order suspending certain provisions of open meeting law and banning gatherings of more than 10 people, this meeting will be conducted by remote participation to the greatest extent possible. The public may not physically attend this meeting, but every effort will be made to allow the public to view and or listen to the meeting in real time. Persons who wish to do so are invited to click on the following link, if you do not have a camera or microphone on your computer, you may use the following dialing number, 1301-715-8592, meeting ID 92501788125, task code 636224. Please use only dial in or computer and not both as audio feedback will distort the meeting, this meeting will be will be audio and video recorded. One call to order enroll call 221-37 Crescent Commons Development LLC 44, 46 and 48 Crescent Street. Zoning zoning board subcommittee will meet with the project architect to discuss architecture and reducing massing. That's it.
Alright, thank you.
Do a roll call.
Yeah.
Okay. And Amy, yeah.
The subcommittee is assembled. We're going to talk about Crescent Street and what progress has been made since the last the last meeting and hopefully there's enough progress, at least we've reached a point where in fact we can make a recommendation that they go to the zoning board, so the public can have their say as well as the zoning board at the same time. This meeting, basically, the public can watch, listen, but we're taking no comments basically from anybody. So we're going to leave this with Peter to take us through basically what has transpired and I guess it's in a week or something like that.
It's been a week, yes.
Yeah, so I need to, I guess, turn the sharing.
You can make me the host, Jim, I'm gonna share the screen for him.
Alright, so you're gonna have to direct me on that one.
So go to, so if you click on participants, find my name and then click on the little button to the right, should let you raise, make host.
Just says more, okay, wait a minute. Okay. Yep, okay, you should have it.
No, you made Peter the host.
Did I make Peter the host?
Yeah.
Oh yeah, I did, didn't I? Probably.
So now Peter needs to make Rick the host.
Yeah, can you make me the host, Peter? Be the first promotion I had all day.
We can go around the table with this one.
We're trying to look where I'm supposed to do that.
You click on participants and then click on my name. It'll say more next to it.
It flies off the side of more.
Me to the co-host, does that work?
Yeah, that works, I think. Yep, it works, got it. Can we see that?
I can. Everybody can see that?
Yep, so let's go through the plans, see what's changed. Because I want to find out whether react, whether there's been any reaction to my comments and Amy's comments last time around, so.
Okay.
Plans and then the elevations and, well, I think sometime during this, let's find out where we are with parking and unit counts.
So what we, what Rick and I thought we would do is I'll go through the floor plans and describe the changes that have happened there, then Rick will do the, and we'll talk about unit count. Then Rick will come in and talk about the parking and how that is met in conjunction with the unit counts, then we can go back and look at elevation. And I'd also like to show some comparison slides, be showing where we were and where we are now.
Okay, good, thank you.
But this is the proposed first floor plan, which shows in the bottom middle, the entry. Right there, yes, access by stairs off of Crescent or by a very gentle sloping porch off of Crescent Hill. Stairway elevator, some mechanical room and access to the parking garage behind. A big, a major change here is that the three units that were to the right of that lobby are no longer there, although we're going to maintain the windows on the facade. We took those units and moved all of them to the rear of the building. Reducing the height of that building in the rear by of story. Bringing it to the level of Crescent Street, so now it's a three floor building, similar to the building behind it. These are four garden style units. Each of them two bedroom. There, that's so that's unique and different from what it was before. Rick, if you go to the next level. This is the second level, similar to the way it was before. But the breakdown is that on the second floor, we have 10 one bedroom, three two bedroom and three three bedroom units. If you go to the next floor, Rick. The third floor repeats, similar to the second. Where there are 10 one bedroom, three two bedroom and two three bedroom units. And then if we go to the fourth floor, here, there are no units in the back. We've added community terrace which will suppress into the roof system, so after the mansard and the low hip, I'll suppress a deck that'll get to be used by the whole building in that area. And the count on the fourth floor is seven one bedroom and one two bedroom. The the, what's happened for the unit count is we started at 56, we're now at 45. And out of the 45, we have 27 one bedrooms, seven two bedrooms and five three bedrooms. Five three bedrooms are part of the 40B, so they're required to be there. But the bulk of our units are one bedroom units. So Rick, I guess now we'll look at the at the parking.
So again, we've removed all the parking from the rear and Jim has lowered that down to the Crescent Street level. So we now have 27 parking spaces coming in off of Crescent Hill Street. These are all standard spaces, no tandem, 24 foot aisle widths with all of our handicap parking at this level. So this level is accessed from Crescent Hill only. The lower level, you travel down the driveway and into here to get into the lower level. The low level has save, 39 parking spaces, there's two spaces outside here. For a total of 70, 70 parking spaces. The only thing that we did to the parking is there's some eight and a half wide spaces here, here and here. And that, no, no tandem. So they're all nine by 18 or eight and a half by 18. We go to the unit mix. 40 units, that one and a half spaces per unit requires 60 spaces. The five three bedroom unit requires 10 parking spaces for a total of 70 and we're providing 70 with three accessible.
So you got parking spaces outside the building?
Two, right here, yep, at the bottom of the, at the bottom of the driveway.
The ramp, at the end of the, top end of the ramp, okay.
You got it.
So is there, I guess I might ask, is where the the grass isn't like to the right behind the, those parking spaces? Are you planning on any sort of unit opening onto the ground there?
Now the units, for those four units on that level will have doors and pathways that come out onto that area.
Okay.
Which is, which is different than what we had before.
Yeah.
And there's a grade change here, right, we're down at 102 up here, we're up at like 114 up here.
There's considerable grade change between those two, yeah, at least the floor. Alright.
Is the dumpster inside or outside? Have we talked about that yet?
No, we haven't.
I think we have, no.
No, but I think that's something they're gonna look to.
So, so I believe in what the intent was going to be and I don't know that we've worked that all out yet, but the intent would be for the dumpster to be inside over here. And there'd be an access way here, the trash truck as it is backs down Crescent Hill Street. On their way out, they can stop here, wheel it out and wheel it back in.
They'd have to get, they'd have to get their own though, right?
Sorry?
Wouldn't they have, the town wouldn't be picking it up?
Well, no, they wouldn't, but likely the the owner here would contract with the same company that the town contracts with, happen all at the same time.
Got you, okay.
But this is going to be bigger units, this is an individual, individual units basically, trash, so it's going to be rollout type of units, I assume, but that's that's something the board will be asking anyway, so let's stick with the design for the moment, because the these are questions that basically will come up as as bigger questions to the whole project. And our task at the moment really is to sort of get this to a point where it's ready to, for the board to see, but we know at the same time, we've got more work to do going forward. So after.
More details to fill in.
Yeah, after several weeks, basically, we might be getting to a point where we can recommend this to the, to be viewed by the board and get comments from them next. Alright.
Okay, okay, proceed to the elevations?
So, so the, where are the eight and a half inch, eight and a half foot parking space along the back edge of that level?
On the lower level, here. Here and here.
Alright. Alright, the aisle width is 24, did you say?
24 feet, that's correct.
Okay. Alright, let's move on to the elevations.
So the elevations, we're working through them, we've got the building reduced in many areas to three stories. Two stories in a mansard or three stories in a mansard. We're working with putting adormers where we can. We've reduced the height of this building from when we started by 25 feet, then some areas two and a half stories. You can see here on the left elevation, the Crescent Hill elevation is showing the three story building in the rear, which is right down on grade now. How it was before, because we took the parking out below it. And I think that's a pretty major change as it meets up against the houses that that sit beyond it in the, in the back. Next slide, Rick, and here we have the the rear elevation again showing that three story building. Some parking, which is really suppressed there, but in the elevation looks like it's exposed. And also the right elevation, which is the elevation where the parking is entered from the lower area. Again, working and as Jim mentioned, still working through sections of the building, updating it with plan. Making sure that it's coordinated, some of that's still going on, but the blockout is is closed. There's still more work happening here. If you go to the next slide, Rick. Here I did a comparison where I showed the original front elevation on the left and our proposed elevation on the right. And I think it graphically shows how the, well, it does show how the building dropped, how there's a whole floor missing and how we've really changed, not just, not just the, well, obviously we've changed by 11 units, but the whole massing. Breaking the building up into segments left to right, so that there's mini towers that happen and your eye sees the building undulating, it's not a straight facade. I think it's changed drastically and also on the Crescent Hill side. Instead of being a five story box, it's it's now 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 small masses, smaller masses, that's it. I think we, reduction of a whole floor made that possible. And now, Rick, the next slide. And I think this is very telling, here in the red behind is the original front elevation on Crescent. And here in black is the is the new elevation. And and you can see especially on the far right, that's a full two story reduction plus the roof. And in the main section of the building towards the center, that's where the 25 foot reduction happened. So there's a fair amount of that building that's been removed and changed. I believe that's what we have, is it, Rick? That's the last one?
That is the last one.
That's the last one.
So, so go back two or three slides. Back to the right, just the straight elevations. Not the comparison ones. Yeah, so, yeah, on the front, so my comment the last time was, on the right side was to make that more like it was stepping down, basically, in in the neighborhood. And you've eliminated that whole section that used to go out there, at least another three bays or so. So that, so that's my comment and it looks like you followed through on that. And of course, on the rear, I wanted to knock that down by a floor. It wasn't, I wasn't so interested in knocking off a floor as I was, well, I was, but what I wanted to see was that to step into the neighborhood, basically, at a respectable elevation or height compared with the rest of the buildings up there, which you've done. But not lost any units, which it's not, I'm not as concerned about that as I am basically getting the massing to work right in this thing. So that seems to work. Those are the, those were the two major areas in my mind, but I think also, I think this probably, the roof, the higher part of the roof is probably close to the budding property is, as far as the peak of the roof up the hill, because this thing's still stepping down, but this is looking much better and I think it's at a point, basically, where it should go to the board and get a reaction from them. And they need, they need to basically, as the statistical information that you brought up, I think would be very helpful for the board to understand, because I know they're quite upset with parking issues, basically, not having adequate packing, I know the neighbors were upset with that as well, because so we're going to get into that discussion, I'm sure, with the board. As to, as to parking. Um, as to, as to parking. Space size will end up having that discussion as too with the board, I'm sure. So I don't wanna, I don't wanna go any further than this at this moment. Um, I don't wanna get into material discussions or anything like that. We can do that in follow-up design meetings after we get. Um, feedback from the board. So I think what you've got right now is adequate to show them both the character and perspective of this. And the size, the size of this thing, and I think the comparison pieces. With what was, what was put out there at the start. As uh, is, will be helpful for everybody, including the public to understand. Um, where this is coming, where this has come. Now, where we go from here. We'll see after the board starts, and it may not be necessarily in materials. It may still be with. What, what can we do to manipulate this a little bit more so that. It's more accepting in the neighborhood, but this is certainly a fantastic start. And, and basically getting something to, to blend in. Um, in the nature of the, in, in some of the nature of the neighborhood that already exists. Even though there's some volume in this thing, but it's not anywhere near where it was. So, um, it might be a few elevations to clean up or not. Um, basically to, to, uh, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't go spend too much work on this until we hear back from the board, really. But I, I see the right-hand side. Um, elevation basically is probably needing a little cleanup. The rest of them look like they're probably close to the plan. So, um, which units, can you go to the plan and say which units have these balconies in them? Can we just point them out?
Um, yeah, they're here.
You wanna back up one more? I just saw something.
Go ahead.
So keep on going. Up one more. All right, so this. The unit that's, I don't, I can't see, I can't read the number, but the, the unit, the unit, the two units toward the back towards the stairwell?
Yep.
Those, those have gotta go. Absolutely gotta go. They, they, they don't fit in. With what, what I wanted to see basically for this stepping down the hill. It just makes a mockery of it basically, the, the stepping down the hill, so. I would like to see those gone.
Do you think those could come at the end of the hallway where we have the terrace?
When you say that, what are you saying?
Here in this area, I, I'm in that area? I just, I, I'm, I've worked, I, I just don't know where to. The unit count is, is kinda critical at this point. Um, for the clients to make this all work, and I just don't know where to get them the additional two units.
I, I, I just don't see him going in there. I mean, that's, that's on the, that's on the downhill side. And it's going the full height. This is gonna be pretty high up. On that down side basically, and it doesn't, it doesn't respect what I was trying to. Get across, which was stepping down the hill. Yeah, it stepped down the corner, but it doesn't step down the back, so. Anybody that's downhill is looking, looking at this uh, this monstrous. I don't know, what's, what is it at that point, like five stories up? Or something?
Can we look at that on the right, Rick? Maybe we can get an idea.
Pete, can I chime in for a sec?
Sure.
Um, I was gonna say what we could do is, because I, I know that loft unit that we have. Between the second and third axis, our third bedroom to get us to the count.
Yeah.
Could we, could we separate those? So those are two units and then. Maybe combine that unit into a smaller if we can reduce the mass on that side and get our third.
That would be great, but we're held by the forty B to have the five, three bedroom. Um. Kind of fine. I guess it's, it's the right, so it's, it's here with, oh, no, it's here, Rick. Where those units are happening.
Right, at the top of that.
Top of that.
Yeah, right.
Yeah.
Yeah, right here, right?
Right.
Next, that's the stairwell.
That's right, to the left.
The left of that are those units. Uh, on the roof, basically, on the, on the third floor.
Yeah.
Fourth floor, I guess. So this is, you know, pretty high on this side, and what, what, what it doesn't show is it doesn't show the way the grade cuts away there. So it, it's nice and, you know, comes to a step, steps down and then runs straight out. Well, that's not reality. Reality is it basically is on a slope. Going out towards the street and it's quite a sharp slope. So I, I just, I wanna see this side of the building basically. Uh, not have that grand appearance and not overshadow the neighbor down the hill at the same time.
Right.
I wanna see, you know, I was, in, in a way, I wanna see this end of the building at the same. Elevation as the back building, which you've already lowered.
Right.
That makes, that makes a lot of sense to me. Now, whether you wanna rearrange the mix inside what's left for volume. That's another thing entirely. But I, I, I just don't see that building extending itself all the way out to this edge area.
Can we, can we still submit this bill, can we still come in front of the board with? The building as it is tonight? And then know that and talk about that, how we're going to try and relocate those two units?
Well, the whole object of this, I mean, you certainly could do that. But the whole object here is to work with this committee, basically this group. To try and get it to a point where they can say, you know, we've made some progress on this. I'm gonna tell you right now that. I will clearly be dissatisfied. Or at least not express any interest in this particular appendage at that upper level to the board. And I'm sure they'll listen to me and either, you either deal with it now or you're gonna deal with it on next Wednesday, one or the other.
Yeah. Um, and Rick, there, there's no other opportunity if I, just out loud, if I was to bring those unit, like two units back in the front. Two linear units. Is there a way to get any other parking? So go, go to the first parking level up on Crescent Hill. If, if we, if we came in here, uh, up on this area and we put two units right there.
I can't see where you're pointing.
Uh, yeah, I'm where your hand is. If I was to do two, not, let's say we took those parking spaces and put two units in there. Could we, could we somehow get that parking?
Oh, you'd lose one, two, three, four, five, six, seven spaces.
Yeah, you, you'd be under the count. There's no other place you can squeeze on out, quite frankly. Not that I can see, anyway.
We're trying to keep the underground parking with the building footprint, you know, for construction costs, not have a. Underground garage that expanded beyond the building footprint.
No, and I think that's the right thing to do.
Right.
Um. If you need to increase your count, I just don't see it going, going in that direction, basically. Not in a, not in the effect it has on the volume, the appearance of the, of the building.
Because I guess the only spot we'd have is on the lower level parking underneath that grass, right? Somehow. That's the only spot we possibly could do something.
Yeah, and you know, maybe we could grab, you know, four more spaces, but you wouldn't grab seven more spaces.
Okay.
Can you go to the um, the rear elevation? Please?
Can.
Is that? Image backwards?
You're not in the rear elevation.
No, that's the, yeah, it is. That's the one.
The rear up on the top.
Yeah.
No.
Isn't the shorter part on the left-hand side? Isn't that the part that sticks out and does the L?
Um.
I think it's most labeled.
No, I think that's the rear. Well, maybe.
It's flipped.
I think it's reversed.
Steve, is that the rear or do we mix it?
It is the rear. I think it's.
Yeah, she's correct.
Flipped.
Yeah. Gotcha.
I was thrown, I'm like, I thought I understood the layout of the building, but this one's not making sense.
Yeah.
Um.
In fact, I, I. I don't know, I don't even know that flipped, it's the right one, because what you'd see behind this. If you look at the building on the right, which is the three story.
Yep.
The building would be going past it in the rear, behind it.
Yes, that's right.
So I, I'm not sure what this one is.
Yeah, neither.
It's almost, it's almost an, or iteration of the one below.
Yeah. Strange. All right, we'll, we'll get into that for sure.
I think, I mean, except for what uh Jim was saying about those two units, um, I think you guys, you listen to us and you, and I appreciate that. Um.
Thank you.
Yeah, it, it's, I think it's coming along, and I think that. Um, like what Jim said, when you show this to the whole board, I think it's important to show where we came from and then. You know, to this point, and then obviously if you can move those two units or lose those two units, um, I think it'll make a big difference. Um, but I appreciate you guys working with us and, and listening and, and trying to, you know, make the best project we can.
I'm, I'm interested to see how the concept of that deck area. Out back works, quite frankly. I mean, it's an interesting idea. Um.
Yeah.
Because you're gonna have to do something like that for air handling units too, in the, in the main part of the building. So if you can take the opportunity to use that as a, as a deck area, I guess I'd be interested to see how that works out.
That was actually, that was the Bocelli's actually thought they would like to have, and I think, I also think it's a great idea. To have an amenity like that. Um, and since we're eating so much of the, the ground. It's a chance to kinda give it back, you know?
Yeah, they, they, I mean, as we've seen on a few other projects where in fact. Um, particularly when they're a C shape, they're, they're giving uh over some courtyard area, so this is not quite the same, but. Like the idea of providing some outsourc space.
Right.
I, I think that deserves some conversation, whether in fact it stays or not is another matter. I'd be a little worried maybe about uh, you know, what goes on up there. I mean, if you start ending with umbrellas and. You know, um, tables and chairs and stuff like that. Do people around that area basically feel like they're being looked down on? Depends on how much the wing walls are. On the other hand, this is also to the back of the building, so. I don't know, it's, it, it's an interesting concept. Hadn't thought about, even thinking about this one, but I'd like to see how this progresses anyways. Yeah, before it may die or may not die, but we'll see.
Okay. I mean, our, our biggest challenge at the moment, I, I think, is how to. Is how to relocate those two units within the building to keep the unit count. That, that's, that's really the, and, and we drawing the rail or rear elevation, but that's easier.
That's, that's what they pay you the big bucks for.
That's right, that's right.
All right. So, Amy, anything else?
I don't think so, um.
Agreement that we send this on to the board?
Yeah, I mean, I think that it's a good, um, a good point to have them take a look and to kinda get the feedback of everybody. Um, and like Peter said, you know, we can tell them that they're trying to see if there's a way that they can move those units. Um, but I think it, I think we're a good point to see. If they feel we're heading in the right direction, or if they think that we're way off and we need to start over, you know? I think it's a good, a good stopping point for that.
I would rather see, quite frankly, I'd rather see those units gone before they go to the board, but. If they wanna make, if they wanna try and make an argument. Um, that's up to them.
Right. Oh, no, I definitely agree. I mean, obviously for me, less is better, but.
Yeah. They won't support it.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, you might, you might see them there, Jim, just um. Just the lack of time to make a change before, because as you know, with your board, stuff has to be submitted tomorrow. For Wednesday.
Yeah, I understand.
So, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna reserve thought on that on our end, you know, we, we, we've already had a twenty percent drop in unit count. Um, going from. Uh, fifty six down to forty five, and, and then, you know, we've gotta look at. You know, with the state program, we have to keep this project economically feasible. So, so those, I think those units are probably gonna be critical on our end, so you know, perhaps we just show this the way it is just for discussion purposes and certainly. You know, as we would expect, uh, you're gonna tell the board what you think about it, as you usually do, and we respect that. Um, but at least we can have a discussion on it, perhaps.
Okay. I don't think we have anything else to accomplish tonight, frankly.
No.
Unless there's something more you guys wanna say.
No. Can I, can I say something?
Sure.
I wanna, I wanna thank you guys. You and uh Amy for all the help that you've uh done. I, I think Wakefield's kinda unique, because uh, you know, we've done this in a few other cities and towns. And uh, no one, no other town has ever gave this much help from a board. Uh, to help a contractor or a developer, so I wanna thank you.
Thank you.
You and the team for, for working with us, like I had mentioned, you know, it makes a big difference when we have. Um, teams that wanna work with us and, and do what's best for everybody, so we appreciate.
Again, you know, I'm, I'm from Wakefield, and this was my, this was my grandmother, my grandfather's property. Yeah, when my mother, my mother was born in the, in the forty six.
Wow.
And uh, you know, then I bought, I bought the other one from my aunt that was my grandfather, other grandfather's house, but. You know, and uh, we want, we wanna work with the neighborhood. We're not trying to. We're not one of those guys that, you know, hit and run. This is something we're, we're gonna keep and man, and also manage.
Okay, good.
We like to hear that.
Yep, we do.
So again, I wanna thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, uh, with that, I'm gonna close this uh. Little sub-meeting, basically, subcommittee meeting. At um, seven forty-two, I thank everybody basically for participating. Those from the public who was watched over this will have their opportunity next Wednesday. Um, to comment on anything they've seen, heard, or whatever. Um, we thank you for uh your participation. That, I'm closing the meeting. Thank you all.
Thanks, Jim.
You need to make a motion?
Oh, well, I guess so. You gonna make it?
Sure, I make a motion that we adjourn the meeting of. Three eighteen, twenty twenty-one.
Right, yeah, seven forty-three.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you.
See you next Wednesday.
See you Wednesday.
See you Wednesday.